I'm gonna call the work session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Ben Gordon.
Here.
Councilor Weber.
Here.
Councilor Mo.
Here.
Councilor Rodley.
Here.
Councilor Blackwell.
Here.
Councilor Doyle.
Here.
And Councilor Visionary.
Here, thank you.
We have two items tonight. First is the Goshen industrial area update.
That's better. But we don't have to hear from you for too long tonight. Bring a couple folks up there to join me. So good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here with you tonight. Provide an update on the Goshen industrial area project. As you might know, the county's been working to advance this project for a number of years. And they're now in a position to take the next steps to make the project move forward. So back in January, the county came to the M W C to our board and made a presentation on the project. That was following a presentation they had done about a year prior. And indicated their position to move forward. Counselor Visionary and Counselor Jennifer Yea from Eugene requested that staff in the county come to the councils of each city for a work session. Prior to coming back to you in your capacity as a joint elected officials later this fall to answer any questions you have and give the councils a project update. So that's why we're here with you tonight. We did in late March go to the Eugene City Council and gave them a very similar or substantially the same presentation as what you're gonna see this evening. Heard some, some questions from them and answered a few concerns. And so with that, basically I'd note that I'm here representing Springfield, but I'm also here in my capacity as the executive officer for M W C. So any questions you have related to M W C, I could try to answer those. And yeah, I think, I'm not sure. I think it's Dan and Rob can come up and join me. And I'll turn it over to them to lead a PowerPoint presentation.
All right, evening Mayor Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you. We're excited to move this project along. It's a project that's been kinda inching along for quite a number of years.
Hey Dan.
Yes.
We've got a couple new people on the table.
Yes, sorry, thank you. So my name's Dan Hurley. I'm the Public Works Director at Lane County.
Jordan, so Rob.
Robert Ordard, Special Districts Project Manager for Lane County.
And also join with Jared, by Jared Bader.
Associate Planner for the county.
Our land use parts of this. Thank you for that. So this project, I thought had been going on board about ten or so years, but our county survey recently found a study that's from nineteen sixty-eight, sort of study for Goshen. So you want some riveting bedtime reading? I'm happy to loan that out. But this idea has been out there for quite some time. But the county really started moving this forward about ten or so years ago. And let's see if this works here. Turn that on.
Turn on the correct.
Maybe, can someone just advance slides for me? All right. So we're here today because we're getting ready for the next steps, steps of this, which would require action by you all. We're hoping in the fall with a metro plan amendment, wanted to get this in front of you to bring you up to date on where the project is now. Before your planning commission starts deliberating on this and before we come back for expected action from you all. Just to set the context here, you're probably all familiar with Goshen. If you've driven through it, it's sort of a languishing community out there. The county would really like to see it developed into a regional asset. So just about five, six miles south of Springfield area. We have Linklitty College on their Oak Hill School. As also identified as potential options for connecting into a wastewater system. But that's not the topic we're here today. And there's a number of reasons for that. That could be a future phase if, if the cities and the county are interested in exploring that further and then we'll come after that. But today we're just talking about the potential of connecting Goshen to the wastewater system.
I think it's working with batteries.
Okay.
Tire.
There we go. All right. So you may drive through Goshen and not think much of it, but it is actually kind of a unique area that could be a tremendous asset to the region. Namely being it has a large number of industrial acres. So two hundred and thirty-three general industrial and another eighty-three in light industrial. And there are another other, a list of other important attributes around Goshen. Already mentioned, you know, largely three hundred acres of continuous industrial land, which is, which is unique in the state. It also has great access transportation wise at the nexus of I five, Highway ninety-nine and Highway fifty-eight there. And also the rail line, you know, could be potential asset for industrial developments in that area. Also Bonneville Power, you know, if there was some large power need there, potential hydrogen, green hydrogen fuel could be located in that area to draw on that power. It already has an established water district. Good communications. And then the big thing, you know, the proximity with its closeness to Eugene Springfield where it could supply labor and, and well-paying jobs for the community. So again, this goes back to the sixties of, you know, wanting to develop Goshen. A reason, big reason it hasn't has been this infrastructure piece and the sewer infrastructure and the regulatory barriers around that. So we want to talk to you about those barriers today and kind of what we're looking for from you all. So just some background on this. Again, this goes back, so two thousand and eleven, the board made it a goal by twenty seventeen and we missed that. Lane County will transform the existing industrial land in Goshen to support increased levels of development resulting in jobs that pay no less than a hundred and fifty percent of the median wage. And at that time, it was estimated that around two to three thousand industrial manufacturing jobs could be created. And this was in the wake of the Great Recession and there was a lot of interest in trying to generate economic activity. It's still important today. We went through a process, the R S I A regionally significant industrial, industrial area through Business Oregon to get this designation. And that would give the area some specific advantages for zoning, job creation, expediting permit reviews, those, that sort of thing. This program with, through Business Oregon, Oregon expired. And it's been replaced by, it's called the R S I S, Regionally Significant Industrial Site. And we haven't applied for that, but this could be also attainable for Goshen and give similar benefits. So from that goal, the county then developed what was called the Great Plan, the Goshen Regional Employment and Transition Plan. Your own, your own Mark Rust, I think, was the primary author on this and did some terrific work at that time to develop.
What's that?
So the big piece of this was to upzone the zoning in Goshen to allow for urban levels of industrial development. And that work has, is complete. That's not a part of the discussion today. It went through quite a process to, to have acceptance by that, which included Luba Remand, which Lane Use Land Use, it should be Land Use Board of Appeals. And the, one of the biggest barriers within that was to show that we, it could be serviced and have sewage facilities. So we went through some studies on that. So there was the R S A designation, the Great Plan. The next piece we needed to do was a wastewater feasibility study to show that these industrial lands could be serviced by some sort of a wastewater system. And that looked at a few different options, primary ones being a lagoon system like Lane Community College, something like that. But ultimately was, it was found that, just like back in the sixties, it was recommended that the tying into the Eugene Springfield Metro Wastewater System would be the most economical.
So did somebody appeal it? Because you went to Luba, then obviously was that people that lived there that didn't want it?
No, it was, I think. Was it a
Land Watch.
Land Watch, okay.
Whatever.
Land Watch, Lane County.
Okay, so just as some group, some organization, okay. So, because I mean, it had to go, if it went to Luba, it went through several steps of them.
Right. Yeah, there were, there were three pieces of remand. The one that's relevant to this conversation was this wastewater piece.
What was their contention for, for appeal? What, why did they?
Mark might be able to speak to that.
Like, and I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Whether I should really speak to this or not, but I will. And it's jobs was one of their contentions about that two thousand to three thousand job thing. There were a couple of points they raised. It was remanded and then it was reapproved by the Board of County Commissioners and wasn't appealed again. So it was finalized. But sewer was one of those things. So we added some additional findings upon the remand and then it was readopted.
Yeah, and I wasn't very involved until this became more of a public works project. So I'm not familiar with the long history of the land use parts of it. I don't know, Jared, if you wanna speak to anything on that, but.
I don't have much more to add than what Mark said, but there was a bit of an infrastructure element to the Luba appeals that was addressed upon remand.
But I could definitely get you more information on that. I just don't have that handy. But all the pieces of the remand and the reasons behind that, but happy to get that to your counselor. So after the wastewater feasibility study, which had a recommended option, we went through a second piece around the financial aspects of that, of how, how, how this would be administered and estimates on the financial aspects. And then we sort of took a pause through COVID. There were higher priority pieces, things going on and no real identified funding on this. But with the influx of federal funding, we wanted to see if we could get this to a shovel-ready project to potentially tap into some resources that could be coming for this project. So we finalized a sort of a preliminary engineering study called the Project Definition Report in two thousand and twenty-two. And then we engaged again with M W M C to see if this was still something that would be potentially supported.
So I will tell you a little bit about the scope of the project. So with the recommended route for this is down Highway ninety-nine. It's about seventeen thousand linear feet of sewer line. And it involves about four, it will involve four pump stations. The connection is to an eighteen-inch main up on Franklin Boulevard. And that's, that's the point of connection to the system. It'll serve approximately four hundred and forty-four acres. And at the full build-out, it'll be five hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day. The set, there's another phase to this project, along with the Goshen wastewater line. And that's a line that goes to the Short Mountain landfill. Currently, there's leachate, which is trucked from this particular site. And it is anticipated that a line to there would, would, would benefit the community much more and then just be a lot more efficient. So the total route right now that the, the leachate is trucked is about six and a quarter miles one way.
Thank you, Rob. So for folks that aren't familiar with the word leachate, so that's the wastewater that comes out of the landfill. So there's the rainwater that falls on it, the, the water that's already in the waste and that trickles down and gets collected. And then we have to truck that off for treatment. That currently goes to M W M C. And did you wanna say something on that?
I was just gonna say, so everyone's cleared. It's trucked to the climate transfer facility in our system and comes to our, to our premium, premium plant. So it's not additional flow. It's just, it's getting the trucks off the road.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. And that's a big piece, you know, we've identified in our climate action plan of reducing emissions. We have trucks constantly trucking this leachate. We've, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-seven. And that becomes an operational challenge, you know, particularly during the wet time of year. Sometimes we have to ramp into twenty-four hour operations with three trucks moving. And it's a significant carbon emissions impact and we'd love to get those trucks off the road. So that's why, why there was that second piece of extending out to the landfill. If we get as far as Goshen, might as well try to bring the landfill in.
So Dan, what's the, what's the fiscal impact of removing that whole line?
It's about, last time estimated, that was over three hundred thousand a year. So.
And just trucking costs?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So total costs, construction cost fourteen, four million and then total project cost, that twenty-five million. But these are very preliminary. Those total project costs include the engineering design permitting, buy-in cost to M W M C, which we haven't finalized. We have quite a bit of work to do there. But the big piece that's, that's preventing us from doing this project is the metro plan. In particular, this policy number twenty-six, it says wastewater and water services shall not be provided outside the U G B, the urban growth boundary, except to the following areas. So this area is not listed, but there is precedent for naming specific areas that are of regional importance, such as the Eugene Airport. So what we would be looking to do would be to add these areas to that list of exceptions.
Or we could just bring, bring it into our U G B and call it good.
That's a longer process. Possible. And then if this happened to amend the metro plan, we would also need to amend the intergovernmental agreement with M W M C because it, it matches that language of only providing within the urban growth boundary area. So both of these actions would need to be approved by the Eugene and Springfield City Councils and Lane County. So for each of those actions. And so we're looking to have a joint meeting in the fall. So just some key points. Talked about this as being an economic development project to, to provide a number of well-paying jobs, you know, potentially green jobs. We've looked at different sort of circular economy, you know, options that could be developed there. And that tapping into the existing wastewater system would be the most efficient and environmental rather than trying to run a lagoon or more septic systems. And that you already have a world-class wastewater system here that has received national awards, you know, rather than trying to create a specific wastewater treatment there in Goshen, that this would be the way to go. And as Matt said, the landfill leachate already comes here. So we wouldn't be adding any flow from that piece coming in. And then flow from Goshen as properties, properties developed would, would occur over a very long period of time, you know, probably over a twenty-year, you know, horizon. So the additional flow would be, you know, very incremental. The county doesn't own or control any of the properties in Goshen. So it would just be as redevelopment opportunities come, come about. The intent would be that there would be no cost to existing users in the system. So Springfield Eugene residents wouldn't be paying more because of of Goshen coming in, that it would pay its way. And so we have quite a bit of work to do. We're planning to engage M W M C, starting the conversation on Friday, actually, to talk about what a potential agreement would look like. There have been some things proposed in that project development report, but we really need to get to the nitty-gritty details that, before we come back to you in the fall. And then another one here, just that this wouldn't open the door to sprawl to, you know, opening even to Lane Community College that, you know, the line would be going right by. That would need to be an additional action to go through approval. And the reason why we're not even proposing those right now is because Goshen servicing an unincorporated area and servicing the landfill are outright allowable by Oregon administrative rule. Going beyond that to look at potential, you know, Crestwell or Linklitty College or any other area like that would, would take land use exceptions, which is a lengthy process. And we, we wanted to see if, if this would be of interest to the community before we looked at any other options. I think that concludes, oh, yes.
Joe. I've got some questions on hold on later. So putting that line in is going to cost money. And I understand that Lane County is gonna be responsible for that. But Lane County is also Springfield and Eugene, and it also pays costs of all Lane County expenses. So how are those, how are the funds to be able to purchase that capital project? Where are they gonna come from? What part are they gonna come from? And how are they going to affect the taxpayers in Lane County? Because we all pay those.
Great question. So a few different potential sources. So we have identified for the engineering fees of it that would be able to kick off if there was a metro plan amendment through video lottery funds for economic development. This would be a good fit for those. And we, we've potentially earmarked some of those for, for completing that work. But then the construction dollars are yet to be identified. This would allow us then to go after some of this federal funds and infrastructure money that we think this could tie into. There's a specific chunk of money through the Corps of Engineers that the county can tap into of about four million dollars there. And then the remainder would probably need to be financed through, the state has what's called the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. So we would need to take out a loan. And then developers would then pay system benefit, you know, cost buy-in as they develop to pay their way.
Increased S T Cs.
For those, not, not to the users in the existing system, but for, for people that are signing on, uh, development in Goshen. Would, would need to pay to connect in.
Yeah, and I get that. So, so any, what you're saying is any new development will have to pay the full bill of whatever, of whatever gap exists of the plan.
For their piece of that, yes.
And so Matt, on your end, we, we will say with this goes in and that's gonna, of course, make that ripe for Crestwell, Lane Community College, et cetera, these other entities and even the industrial users in the area to tap into that same system, which is fine. But then that's gonna directly affect M W M C and its processes and its potential increase to cost of those processes. And that's still not in the city. And yet those costs will then be transferred to all, would be transferred to all the subscribers or customers of M D, M W M C, which is typical. How would you separate those out in regards to collections?
Any, any other development beyond this project would have to go through the same process and be, it'd be a metro plan approval. There need to be, as Dan mentioned, some, some additional approvals before you even get the metro plan approval, approvals from the state. And then again, M W M C's intergovernmental agreement would have to be redrafted. And so all, all, both of those actions would take Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County approvals. And so it'd be a similar process. And we'd look at the impacts, see what the impacts would be to our system, what the, what the capacity is, is that is available and how, how we'd wanna do that. So I don't think that we, and we'd wanna be prudent when we did that. There, there wouldn't be just the ability to connect. So we definitely would have an opportunity to make sure we remain whole if we were to entertain even accepting that.
Counselor Brody.
Hello, hello, Dan. It's good to kind of see you.
Good to see you, Counselor.
So I have two questions. One, you share in this, this presentation, the timeline for getting to the approval. What, the first question is, what is the timeline for actually moving this to like fruition? Like, how long do you think it's gonna take? And the, the question that goes along with that is do you have any sort of estimated, like, impact on the infrastructure? Like, are we gonna, like, while it's being built, are, is there gonna be extra strain on the roads? Is there gonna be, you know, traffic challenges? Just how is it gonna affect sort of regionally the infrastructure if we move forward with it?
Great questions, Counselor. So so, I'm sorry. I was thinking about the second thing. And the first one was, sorry.
The timeline, like, once we get through the approval process, if we all say, yes, let's do it, how long is it gonna take for the project?
Sure. So if we get through the metro plan and then the M W M C I G A, we would need to, so say we get to agreement on all the pieces, all the financial pieces and, and get to a green light, we would then start the engineering design. That's probably gonna take us a year and then all permitting on all that. I would say best case scenario, if we had all the funding lined up, would be probably two years from now. Two years from this fall. And then, you know, another probably season of construction whenever that landed. So, you know, we're probably looking at, you know, probably three years before it was, is finally in place. And then impact the system. I say one thing, just impact to the wastewater system. I think we need to probably get more analysis from M W M C, but we were estimating over the full build-out, it would only be about three percent of the total capacity now. And that would be, you know, probably twenty years down the line. But as far as other impacts to roads, you know, we can manage like any other, you know, road kind of construction project, the big thing would be constructing a trench that goes along there. So I would see that just kind of moving down Highway ninety-nine, where you would have traffic stopped and, you know, going around construction equipment as we're on the, the side of the road there. I wouldn't see a, you know, major significant impact on that.
So Dan, when you think about the landfill itself, right? So would we, could we potentially see the cost to extend the line to the landfill passed on to users through, through a tipping fee increase?
Good question. There's a piece that we would, you know, charge out to the landfill. Right now, we have existing funds to be able to cover that, but we have a lot of projects in the works for, for the landfill that we'll probably talk about, you know, with the transfer station, with the material recovery facility. So potentially, yes. So all, all of, all of the projects at the landfill are covered by user fees. So that's the only source of funding for our waste, solid waste system. So.
Well, I think, I think that, I think that was where my concern was when, when we say that, you know, users are not gonna bear the cost of this, right? Like, that's not entirely accurate, because we're, right, when, when you raise a tipping fee, then by our agreements, we're gonna turn around and pass it to, pass it to our users, right?
I was, I was explaining, I was saying not to the users of the wastewater system, but, but, but users are already paying for that trucking cost that would be offset, you know?
Yeah, and I, and I, that, that's not, that's not necessarily, like, getting devotions is an important part of our, what our regional economy is, right? So it's not necessarily a sort of deal killer in my, from my, from my perspective. It's just trying to understand all the moving parts. The second question I really had was when you think about all the other landfill projects, right, that, you know, are going on, like, what's the timeline when we start the conversation about the, you know, the recycling facility at the landfill? When do we learn more about that? Because I'm sort of seeing these as two parts to kind of the same conversation. And I really wanna kind of walk into that, you know, from my perspective, walk into that public hearing, kind of understanding the whole picture about where the county is going through that corridor.
Sure. So the material recovery facility, we'd love to have a conversation, a work session with you on that. We are currently working the legislature to try to get fifteen million dollars for that project. And if we don't get that, I, I don't see us being able to move that forward. So we should know that in the next couple of months. So keeping fingers crossed on that. And, and if we get that funding, then I would like to come to you soon thereafter to start talking about whether we can move that forward. We were also trying to find out if we could identify a property for that, because we were trying to cite that at the landfill and it wasn't looking like it was gonna work. And we are currently talking to a property owner that, where we could potentially cite it. So so we're trying to get these pieces in place to see if it's even a feasible project. So I think once we know that in the next couple of months, I think we can come back and have that conversation.
That would be great, because I think it's a body, well, I don't know where the, where the city Eugene is, but I do know it's new material for us, right? And as soon as you're ready to come back and to have a work session, you know, just getting contact with Nancy and she'll get you on the, get you on the schedule, because the opportunity to ask some of those broader questions would be really, would be really helpful. The other two things, I guess I really wanna point out is, to me, this leads, you know, towards that path of what we want done in Glanwood around the transfer site, which is ultimately, we wanna close that transfer site. So to me, that, this is an important context of it. The other part that you had brought on, and this is, I think, a question for, you know, our partners on, on the, on the county commission, is, you know, really you're identifying some economic development funds, right? And really, from my position, we really wanna come back and talk to the county commission to make sure that we're using all those economic, like, we've got other economic development needs, you know, that we, we would love to use some of those funds for. So you may see some of those questions come up when we do that, when we do the public hearing. That's not, I think this is a great project.
Yeah, I agree too. And I was a little concerned Sean brought it up into the competition for those lottery funds is a little bit of a concern as far as who we're gonna compete with and what's the give and take of that. But I am also concerned with the, most tipping fees or what you're currently charging are, are single all year. That's obviously going to negatively impact their costs or their bills, so to speak, to help pay for this project, I assume, is what you just said. And so that's gonna directly affect our rate payers here. So again, that project will affect us negatively, indirectly, but still negatively. If we didn't do it, it wouldn't happen. So therefore, if we do this, it's gonna negatively impact our citizens. But have you projected out how much the, I mean, I don't assume there's not gonna be much ongoing cost after construction, after completion, except for maybe a pump station here and there?
Right.
And so that's gonna save you about three hundred grand a year. And so is that going to be pushed back towards our dollars and savings to them? Are you gonna pocket it?
It would all be offs, offset. So, you know, we calculate the rates we need. We, you know, we're not a profit, you know, business as a public entity. So that would be offset from, you know, our total costs that we need to then have covered by.
Well, we all have reserves, it sounds. We all have reserves. So.
We have, we have reserves for, but it's all for, for that resource. So for the next phase of the landfill, we build up those reserves and then we draw those down. But we don't, we don't keep a, you know, growing reserve other than for those future projects.
So I could add to that, but the, you know, on the flip side, there's gonna be user fee revenues coming in from development there in S T Cs that would come into the M W M C system. That would be a stable source of revenue for us. It is gonna eat away at our capacity very slightly. But I think overall, broadening our base is gonna be in the best interest, potentially as far as the revenues are concerned for our users region-wide. So that would offset. So that would offset, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be the impacts that were noted, um, to Springfield and others, to tipping fees and to, um. What Dan mentioned and Council President mentioned, but on, on the other side, there will be a corresponding offset.
Steve. You, you mentioned it might take three years for construction to then, you're very optimistic.
Yes, that would be best case scenario.
But, yeah. My question is, we're, we're spending X number of dollars right now to haul the leachate to the transfer site. And that will go away, and then that hauling is going to go on forever, it's going to get more expensive. And that's going to go away, replaced by this. So. My question, like Joe, is how much is this going to cost in relation to what's going to go away and hopefully it's beneficial.
And I could bring you back those numbers of what is the cost specifically for the leachate piece and the payback over time for those savings, if you happen to do that. As well as any other, um, questions, thoughts or concerns you would want, like, to look into. Victoria.
Um, so my question is more about the citizens in Goshen. I absolutely lived in Goshen for, for. Almost ten years on B Street, right next to the, the school. And we had a septic system that failed and had to deal with digging that up and doing that whole thing. Well, so, uh, it, it sounds like the people that are living there now, would they be? Would they be allowed to connect and then would they have to pay for the, the lines to get down their streets to them? Because like, it was quite a ways, well, I mean, it was a block and a half for me on B Street. To get to that. So is it going to be similar to like, kind of what's happening with Glenwood where there's, there's a main line down Franklin? And the people on the sides kind of would have to pay their, that's what the laterals would have to be developed. So they. So that whole hundred and fifty foot rule or whatever, I don't know what your rule is with connections.
Yeah, um.
Three hundred feet, yeah, yeah. So if somebody's septic failed, then would they then be? I know George is really tough on that. He makes them, so they would be able to connect even though they're not annexed, even though they're outside the UGB.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then they would start paying the fees.
Connection cost, yeah. Which we would need to.
Wow, that could be, whereas now they would be allowed to repair or replace their septic. But in the future, because of this, they would have to actually pay those costs.
When those laterals, laterals are built, um, you know, I think that would be dependent on, on the community, you know, we, we're, our goal is to. Build those laterals out into the industrial area. Um, so I'm not sure when those would happen out into the residential area.
That's a catch twenty-two, too. I mean, it's, it's a perhaps, like, they can replace if they have room, which they may very well. Um, they may not, and they may have to put in a, like, I had to put in a twenty-five thousand dollar system where I learned. Um, and I was fortunate that we are able to do that. In some instances, they may not be able to put anything in. Not sure what happens there, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, when your septic fails, just in general, it's just.
I know, right. And I just wondered what the cost to that person's going to be. If they're right there. I mean, you're only, you're only talking about the main, the main trunk line, you're not talking about providing laterals.
The full buildout would be the laterals, but that.
But not into the, the neighborhood, the A, B, C, D streets on that, uh, what is it, what would they call that? Because like west or east, kind of like the southeast side.
Our, our main goal is to get that trunk line and, and then to be able to service off that as, as development occurs.
Okay, yeah, I just was trying to figure out what happened in the meantime, so.
Yeah, and the, and the line would be sized accordingly for some growth. Or, you know, you don't want to make it just specific to the current project. It will be upsized. Um, so future developments or what have you may potentially have that capacity already to connect, so.
May have.
May have, depends on, depends on what the development is. So then we have had other people that are interested, um, in.
Yeah, well, so the design, the design will be sized to, to service the whole and the, so the, the trunk lines currently in the engineering board. Size to accommodate all the flow within that unincorporated community of Goshen, including the residential area. Now, if. Um, Eugene Springfield, Lane County want to explore, um, you know. Bringing in Crestwell, then we would need to change the, the size of that, the, those trunk lines to accommodate, because it's, that's, they're not sized for that. So I would like to, if, if this moves forward in the fall, follow up on the heels of that to see, is this of interest to the community?
So let's just be clear, Dan, nobody's talking about going to Crestwell right now.
Absolutely not, that would, that is part of the conversation now.
Yeah, I, I would, we haven't even talked about going to Crestwell here, so, you know, somebody should probably let them know if that's coming.
They, they have, they have voiced interest, and, and you may be aware of that in the community. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware that there is interest there. I would like to follow it up to see if, if there's interest in the community of supporting that. Um, and that also goes for Lane Community College, Oak Hill, um, the county's Armitage Park. But those are separate projects that we're not talking about.
Right, right. And that's why, that's why, like, yeah, I want to make sure we're clear about the phase we're talking about right now.
So not that it requires you to be a wizard, but the old saying, if it's predictable, it's preventable. And if you think that Crestwell and these other entities are not going to want to do it, and you build with that mindset. Then I think we're going to be sorely mistaken or sorely regret not. Considering something that's predictable and, and I predict that it's not going to end at Short Mountain. Just saying.
There's definitely interest there. It's whether there's interest with Eugene Springfield.
I mean, it's, it's really how you sell it too. I mean, if you're, you're, you're coming across and saying, okay, this is just for short amount, don't even think about these other entities. We have to think about those other entities and we have to think about the potential. And for us to, to step in this puddle, probably ought to know how deep it is. So, and I'm not saying it's wrong. I mean, I, I, I like it. I mean, I think it's smart that we are. Taking trucks off the road. I don't care about the carbon, I don't care about the fuel and where are the trucks and cost of the county. But, yeah, we really need to be, we would have our eyes open.
I understand, counselor. We, but the reason why we're bifurcating those, one is timing. And then two is, those are two different decisions and want you to be able to make decisions on.
Right, so when we get to the joint hearing, the only decision that we're going to be asked for is to amend the metro plan to say, hey, look. Can we, can we extend sewer service outside the, you know, outside the UGB, right?
We're not bringing it up as just, uh. Oh, you know, open entirely. We're bringing it to specifically service Goshen and Short Mountain. So.
Okay, and I think that's the clear part, like, because, right, we're talking about multiple different scenarios here that are all important, but. May not be the conversation we're quite to that point yet. Okay. You had, but the top is Crestwell and they're not anywhere near making, they, they don't know where they, where they want to go yet. They're still in, like. Very, very infancy of the planning. So.
But we will, will want to have that question answered before we start into construction to know the size of the pipe thing to put in there.
I think you're looking about eight inch pipe now, I'm thinking, well, we're going to need a twenty-four inch later.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
Turned out.
Okay, um, other questions? Right, I think this was really helpful because, um, you know, it's a, got a couple of moving parts to it. So we appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't take this personally, Mark. I'm going to take the chair with the cushion, though, so.
Ready when you are. Okay, well, thanks for the PowerPoint. I'm going to just test this to make sure it works. Yep. So I'm here to talk to you about one of your favorite topics, as I heard in the February, it was setting fees, right? So, um. We'll, we'll just jump into it and see how it goes. Um. We're, we're specifically talking to you about just the planning fees, and I want to try and keep some sideboards around that tonight, because. I know that there was a work session in February and it was talking about CPI increases to the entire master fee schedule. There's ten different sections within the master fee schedule. Planning is section eight, so it's just one of those ten sections. There's also sections on engineering, systems development charges, the building fees. So, and actually, I'm jumping ahead on my slides, um, but we are just talking about planning fees tonight. The last time we did a planning fee study was two thousand and ten. That was hired out and done by a consultant, um. As you know, or some of you know, and I, I don't know, I could introduce myself for a few new counselors, but, um. I'm Mark Rust, I'm the planning manager for the current planning department. So good to see you, councilors, you're worth for. Um. We did a major development code update last year that was adopted in June and effective July first of last year. And that impacted, uh, quite a number of different application process types that effectively, without changing any fees. Reduced the fees significantly for some projects. Right, I have just a couple of quick examples. Um, on that, if you don't mind, I could just touch on really quick. Um, one is just last week, we issued a decision for the first type of new application. A type one site plan. For a hundred and twenty-eight unit apartment complex building on Marcola Road. Last year at this time, if they had gone through the process that was in place at that time prior to the code update. It would have been about a fourteen thousand dollar application fee to the city. And taken about forty-five to sixty days. The new process under the new code, again, without changing any fees, just the process. It was a seventeen hundred dollar application fee and took us thirty days. So at least a couple of weeks savings and a significant fee, um, reduction for that type of application to approve those hundred and twenty-eight units. So anyway, just as an example of what the code update has now done for us. Um. So Portland State has been contracted with by us, um, just within the last couple of months at the beginning of the year to perform this, this current fee study. Um. There's three primary objectives to this fee study and they're outlined here and in the memo to you tonight. But primarily, we're trying to determine the average cost of the service for reviewing land use applications in the city. We're assessing the cost recovery. Um, comparing the amount of time and cost it takes us to process those compared to the fees we take in for those. And then also comparing our fees to three other comparable cities. And that's going to be one of my primary questions for you tonight, as you've seen in the packet, is we're coming to you early. As an introduction to the fact that we're doing this study. And are you comfortable with the three proposed cities that we're, um, trying to analyze before we get too far down the road? And so if there's additional cities or different cities, we could have that conversation. And I'm definitely open to other input tonight, too. This is kind of the fee, uh, the slide I was jumping forward to of what we're not talking about. In terms of what we're not studying as part of the planning fee study. I mentioned the systems development charges, the building fees, engineering costs. A lot of those fees and costs are part of a development approval process, but not specifically just the planning review piece. So under state law, and I talked about this in the memo a bit. For many of our fees, but not all of them, it's under state laws, what's defined as a permit. And that kind of connotates a certain type of land use application. There's two ways we can collect fees under state law, and that is either the average cost of service or the actual cost of service. And so the one jurisdiction I know about in the state that uses actual cost of service is Deschutes County over in Central Oregon. For many of their application types, they require a deposit upfront. And then they keep track of how much time they spend on those applications. And then they send you basically a bill at the end or a refund potentially. It's usually a bill, having experience working over there, they, and, and in that dynamic, um. If a neighbor, say, opposes an application and it takes longer, the applicant's paying for that increased time that it takes to process those. Under the average application, we kind of try and balance it out. And some, we gain a little bit more, lose a little bit more. In theory, that it averages out. And then with the code update process that we went through last year as well, for a lot of the new middle housing land use rules. There was specific language built into the state statutes about middle housing. That requires us to revisit those fees a year after they were implemented. To, the, the statute says something to the effect of. Take your guess best at what you think it will cost for the first year. And then after the first year, analyze it in more detail and determine what the average or actual cost of service is for those new types of applications. Because we had never done them before. In our case, we still actually haven't done. A number of the new types of middle housing and use applications, so we have no data to even base it on still. So it's something we'll have to continue to look at every year. The more data points we get from those new types of applications, we can kind of fine tune those fees. This is hard to see on the screen, um, it's in your packet as well. But this is just a quick, very basic flow chart of the different, four different types of land use processes that we have. The vast majority of, um, types we have are type two, which is the second kind of column over from the left. There's type one, which is the easiest, and type two. Type three is a type of application that would go to our planning commission for them to approve, like a discretionary use permit. And then type four is like a legislative change, like the code update itself is a type four legislative update process. The, the city council makes the decision on. So as the example I shared earlier about that hundred and twenty-eight unit apartment complex. It used to be a type two process. It requires notice to all the surrounding property owners and a comment period, and then the potential for a, an appeal process at the end. We moved that from a type two process to a type one process based on state law. Which requires us to have what they call a clear and objective approval process for all housing. And so that kicks it into the type one process. It's, uh, much more streamlined timeframe wise and, um, the lower fee to represent that. This is kind of just a brief chart. Again, probably a little hard to see on the screen, but, um, kind of outlines the timeframes and the decision bodies and process involved with those four different land use application times. I'm not going to go into any detail unless there's any questions. Um, so the difficult part that, uh, Portland State University is really trying to hone in on with the. Comparison to other cities is really trying to facilitate an apples to apples comparison. Um, it can be different, different cities structure their fees in different ways, and even their processes can be different. To have it not necessarily be across the board and equal. Um, I think I get to it here in just another slide or two. Um, I'll share the three cities. I'm not trying to hold it, uh, as a secret, but we do touch on it. But the last thing I want to mention before we get to the three cities is. Um, use of technology to track accurately the amount of time we do actually spend on processing the different types of applications. So we currently really don't have a great way of doing that now. We never really have, unfortunately. Um, the software we use, even just for tracking our planning applications themselves. Is software that was built by the state for building permits. And so planning was kind of an afterthought and, and they thought, oh, well, we'll use it for planning as well. And, um, the state regulates even how the building permit fees and those types of things. They don't regulate finding fees other than the state law I mentioned earlier. But, um, we are working on and looking at increasing our ability through some use of software to be able to track. The actual time and how much for each application itself is spent on processing those applications. To give us better data, to actually calculate the average cost of processing, say, a different site plan applications or a subdivision application. One site plan might be, you know, easy for a coffee card. And another site plan might be for a new Walmart or something. Those are two drastically different site plans. And our fees do account for that based on the amount of square footage they're proposing to build. But. Um, like the base fee or the established base fee for those site plans can be calculated based on average time. I, um, in a previous part of my career, I worked for a law firm as a planner. And we charged for every ten minutes of time we spent for a client's application. We had little buttons on our screen. You had, press it start and stop at timer, so you're billing every ten minutes of your time. And not that we want to necessarily get to that point, but in terms of tracking how much time we spend. Is like really being able to keep track and identifying what it does take. So the three comparable cities that is proposed by PSU based on their research and studies. Is Eugene as the first one, because we're in the same metro area, basically same region. Um, they're not necessarily, um, comparable in size necessarily, but obviously they're right around the freeway. So developers that work in both jurisdictions have similar expectations. So looking at that. The other two are basically the cities that are one step above us and one step, or actually two steps below us. In terms of population size. Um, that would be Medford and Albany. Um, PSU did propose to skip Corvallis. They would be the one, one step below us in population size. However, they think their fee structure is organized significantly different enough from ours. That it doesn't make sense to try and shoehorn their comparison into ours. That it doesn't make sense to try and shoehorn their comparison into ours. So you can see from these numbers, those are kind of the three they're proposing. Uh, that's the scope we proposed with them. We could study more potentially or or different, but um that's really what we're bringing to you tonight is. Asking you, one, about those three cities and then also just in general, other feedback, ideas or questions.
Um, can you explain a little bit how Corvallis is so different? Cause I I felt like Medford was. Just because of the distance and and that market so different, I felt like that was kind of a odd choice. Um, so I was just kind of wondering why Corvallis wasn't.
And I could talk to PSU more about that. I actually have a check in meeting with them um Wednesday this week.
Eugene and Al Albany completely made sense to me, but Medford was just the ball.
Okay. Yeah. No, that's that's fine. I'll check into that.
Okay.
Steve, same question. Is there something better or worse that we can learn from? So that would be my question.
And not that this is necessarily directly applicable, but. As an example, Corvallis used to for the annexations, which I think is one of our fees that we'll want to talk about tonight.
Oh, yeah.
The Corvallis used to only allow voter annexations, meaning any property that wanted to annex, they sent it to a public vote. And it would have to be approved by vote. They they actually had to move away from that because one of our local land use attorneys appealed them enough and they've ruled on it finally that they couldn't really do that. But it was a dynamic in Corvallis that was slightly different than a lot of other jurisdictions around the state. So it's it's things like that that are built into processes that can affect. Um, how the fee structure, but I'll definitely look into it. We're gonna go to Victoria here in a second, but did we lose Councilor Rodman?
We didn't. I can see her on my screen. She just turned her camera off.
Anyone else have anything? Cause I'm gonna, I've got a lot of stuff to talk about.
Why don't you dive in here?
Um, okay, so I did comparables just on my own since February and I used um Eugene. Salem, Grants Pass and Gresham. And the reason why I use those was because I wanted to get different sizes of communities. Because I do believe that they may have different processes and I wanted to see that. So I'll throw that out there. Um, I'm just gonna, can I just do my notes?
Sure.
Okay, um, so as a lot of people are aware that the fee structure and land use as well as um. We're not talking about privately engineered projects. That's also been on my radar, but I know that that's not something that we're discussing right now. I'll leave that for another day. Um, but I understand that staff's working within rates and fees that were established by a council in previous times. Um, your memo kind of seemed to imply that the only reason we're even having this discussion is because of the updates to the Springfield Development Code and I don't. Um, I'm not sure that this conversation would actually be happening as in depth as I hoping that it does because. There's been such an outcry from development in our community that they just are finding it so difficult to. To build in our city. And I've been hearing that for a long time and working for the city of Eugene, I talked to a lot of developers. I talked to somebody today and they were like, really? It's more expensive in Springfield than Eugene. And I'm like, cause the perception is that it wouldn't be, but it is. Um. Uh, da, 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 da. So you state in the memo that you're that most jurisdictions in the state use the average cost of service model. Um, um, I've also been told that Springfield tends to be heavy on the front end and you mentioned that. Um, but that it balances out once the project is done. Um, and I'm trying to understand that because I'm looking at a partition and I'm trying to figure out how a partition has anything on the back end that would be significant. Um, and we'll talk about what I the the numbers that I came up with um. Do, 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 but I I've talked to a lot of people that won't even take jobs. Small jobs like partitions and small subdivisions in our community because it's just so heavy on the fees. Um, that it's not, it's cost prohibitive. And so unfortunately, what happens is our citizens then have to go to these big. Engineering firms and pay a lot more money for very small jobs. I have a piece of land. Um, that's because we have some pretty large lots in Springfield and they're ripe for. Partitions and doing a couple, actually in one house turns into three, right? That's pretty cool. Um, but they're just holding back on that because of the costs that are involved in that. Um, and I like the average cost method, but it seems like our cost of service is three to ten times the average cost of most jurisdictions that I looked at. Um, here's some examples. Um, on a two or three parcel partition. Eugene is about twenty seven ninety nine, Salem is nineteen hundred, Grants Pass is twenty one hundred and Gresham's about twenty three. So the average is about twenty three twenty one. Springfield is sixty eight hundred and fifty four dollars for the same thing. That's a forty five hundred dollar difference between four other services. Now if they're inside the city limits, but out in the UGB. Eugene charges sixty two hundred dollars and we charge twelve thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. That is a double. That's sixty two hundred dollars more. Than what they're charging in Eugene. So those are the things that I can't wrap my head around. And then we go to annexations. And that's the one that I was hoping that we would talk about because I want to talk about this comprehensive planning fee that is. So so heavy on these. Um, a a five to six acre annexation in Eugene is fifty one hundred and fifty five dollars. That same annexation in Springfield is eighteen thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. So I just want to make sure that we're understanding that that's the reason why I have concerns because we're not talking about a thousand bucks. We're talking about thousands of dollars. And I understand that there's other costs involved, but of that eighteen thousand, forty seven hundred dollars of that. Is DIMM meetings, notices. So the cost of almost the entire cost of an annexation in Eugene. Is just in what we're charging for meetings and notices and stuff. So. If that makes me question, I can only imagine what that's happening to people outside of the actual development world. Um, and the comprehensive planning fee, as you explained to me the other day, and I kind of, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Is about bringing infrastructure into those areas so that when people annex, they actually have infrastructure to connect to. Is that correct?
Um, it's about doing the comprehensive planning work associated with planning for UGB area.
It's not even putting in the pipes. It's just the planning.
That's right.
Okay. Um. And it's twenty four hundred and forty four dollars per acre. That's where that, so if you have a thirty acre lot, you're looking at seventy eighty thousand dollars just in that fee. And then the developer has to then do the actual um private engineer project to bring that in. So I hope other people can see that that that's why I'm questioning this so much. Um, I would like to see that DIMM fee, especially on a type two application. I would like to see that somehow simplified. And reduce or eliminate the cost of that. Those DIMM meetings are not just for. The applicant, those benefit us as a city because we're able to get those people around the table. It doesn't have to be so like. We're gonna write all this stuff down and we're gonna put it in the record. It can be a really simple meeting. But when someone comes to me and says, I was gonna do, you know, I'm looking at doing a small subdivision, you know, four lots, five lots. But before I can even do that, they won't even tell me the costs associated with it at the counter until I go in and have this meeting. And I have to spend this money to go in there to find this out. I I don't understand. That seems like a barrier, especially when we're in a time that. That we need to be looking at that. And I feel like the comprehensive planning fee. I want to know. Like a comparison, how much have we collected since two thousand and four in comprehensive planning fees from people that are annexing? Compared to what are we spending? What have we actually spent and developed in that and see a comparison of that. Until we do that. I feel like we should suspend that comprehensive planning fee starting July one. And we talked about that. Until such time that we can actually get records and know what we're charging people. So those are the two things that are really important to me to to maybe talk about tonight is the DIMM. The DIMM meetings, figuring out a way to make that more cost effective because of the benefit it has to both. The 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 potential developer and us and then that comprehensive fee somehow suspending that. And I think you guys had said that June thirtieth or July one because of the fiscal year might be the best way to do that because then that would give you time. To gather the information and come back to us. And then we could talk about whether that's actually appropriate. So um I actually thought that it was the development of the of the wastewater and stormwater. So I'm I'm even more shocked at the fee now. So.
And just to clarify, what was the year you just mentioned about com- um comprehensive planning fee?
Well, it sounds like it's been going on since at least two thousand and four.
Right. Yeah, we don't, we can't even find beyond that, like when it was actually.
But that's nineteen years. So that's a lot of fees to be collecting, depending on how much we've had annexed. I mean, you would know, hopefully we would know that. Um, and the other thing, when you're talking about time. Um, it's, there are ways to do that using an access database, using a, I mean, it doesn't have to be Excel, but I mean, even an access database. Where somebody has to has to track it and um log into the job and they know that they have X amount of days to get it done. And if they don't get to that time, it starts turning different colors and they know. And so then you can kind of see how people are doing. Um, you know, it's not the same, but when we had the motorcycle dealership, we had our our jobs were flat rate. So if it's a tire, it's two hours. If it's a transmission, it's six hours. And if the mechanic can get it done in an hour. Then we're making money, but if they're doing it in four hours for something that we're charging two, then we know. That it's either that person, that mechanic isn't doing it. As efficiently as they can or us as a, you know, we aren't, or maybe we're not charging correctly, right? So um I would just like to talk about those two things and um, yeah, I'll shut up.
Well.
Um, I I would just um, again, lots of train of thought, but I was agreeing with Victoria when you were talking about the DIMM. Um, meetings about, you know, for me, hearing from builders and developers. When they come in just with a project, just wanting to be able to get kind of past that portion and talk and is this feasible and. Really wanting to have that feeling of, you know, Springfield wants to work. They want, we want your business. We want to work with you. We want, yes, we want to get to the next step and. Not just get. All those fees right up front and not. It's not a very welcoming way, I think, start business.
Sure, great. Good input. Thank you.
So a couple of thoughts here, right? Um, one of them, I think from on council side, like we all run into developers, right? We all run into people have challenges and um they bring up real real cost expenses. And I think it's a good time to sort of pull back and sort of talk about, like, it's really easy for us to say, you know, to just. Be compassionate and empathetic, but we really need to pull that information back and take them back. Um, to the staff if they've got real questions about how to how to get them addressed, right? So that's one thing that I think we got to help with is, you know, it's not enough anymore to say, hey, we met a developer. It's, you know, more important that, you know, we try to work them to a place where we can get them connected back with the staff. If that's Neil, if that's Nancy, if that's Ally, like we can work, we can work through that, what that means. Cause if we're gonna be open for business. Right? We gotta do the legwork on our end to make sure that people that are going, hey, I don't want to develop here, right? Are getting back in back into the room and and discussing it. Um, the the second piece is, I'm I'm open to the comprehensive planning uh fee waiver, right? Like, I think if you guys aren't sure, like, you know, like do a little bit more research. Um, you know, if that if that's moving back to Eugene or Eugene's level, if that's moving back, you know, you know, wave it while this is going on. But if you're not sure that like we've recouped the majority of the cost here, right? To me, you know, then let's not collect it again until we get our arms around this. Um, the third thing that I heard that I think is really important, Mark, you had one piece. Really good piece of data from this. I would encourage you to find other places because when I listen to the conversation. Is that we're really been on a journey here, which is redoing our development code and everybody, including our experience and our staff's experience has been. The last ten, the last ten years, but if we've redone this in a way that is naturally driving down fees. Bring us more information than just, you know, like the the story you told was great. But I'll probably for more information about is the work we did on the development code. Driving down the experience that people are actually seeing and what their total costs are. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I have another example in my action too, but I know we're limited on time, so.
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah. The more, because I ultimately, here's my concern when I read this study, this study information. Is that we've sort of tried, tried to compare apples to apples. It's this fee to that fee, right? And in reality, depending on what kind of building product you're bringing bringing to market could be. You know, more, you know, and drive them how much you have in the way of cost. And that's the thing that the builders and developers ultimately pays, right? So I'm really concerned about what's the actual. Right? And so like, I'm hoping when this is done and we see the information, even though SDCs are not in the mix, right? Even though um building permits are not in the mixes for maybe you guys to bring us a couple of examples that are not like, hey, you know, random fee number fifty seven is this. But instead, take that same hundred and seven and go, okay. No, we said it should be seventeen hundred, you know, seventeen thousand dollars to get the building, but all in, you know, the the market recommendations. You know, whatever, whatever they matter is gonna be. Does that make sense? Like, because I I think we're you've, we've kind of driven out of scope SDCs and building permits, which are, you know, also big drivers of fees. Um, the only other thing that I, um, the DIMM thing's an interesting question to me. I'd love to hear you guys to take that one back and kind of, kind of talk about it. I know sometimes there's a structure to it and there's a rationale from it. I'm I'm curious to learn more, right? Like if if the goal was to get people in the in the doors or a different way to do it, I think, you know, well. Uh, I think Ryan Bet had really good ideas with that. Um, last thing was the time tracking piece. I see this come up a lot. I've done a couple of time tracking in my in in my career. Um, here's my concern. Is you don't have, like, is you're, you don't have necessarily a ton of planners that are out there, right? And you don't, we don't necessarily have a ton of applications that are out there over the mix, right? So the question I had when I saw the timing um question was, okay. Is the right answer to invest more in an ability to to understand and move work through your workflow in a more efficient way? Or, right, is the cost that's associated with tracking time across, I don't know, maybe the what, there's ten people involved?
There's five, including me.
Yeah.
Or six.
Right, so the the amount of time that go into in in infrastructure going into tracking time across, you know. Five to six people, right? Is that really gonna be, you know, biased enough insight to really help us understand? And I don't know the answer because I'm not a planner, but that's when I'm listening to the conversation, that's the thing that's really re- really dropping out to me. And then lastly, before I go to Cory. Um, our goal here, right, like, we're making two critical adjustments, right? One of them is in two thousand and ten, we did this work again, right, which was, you know, account, you know. Uh, this, the goal is to be open for business, right? So at the end of this, really, I would, I want to see us come back and do this every three to five years. And I don't know what the right answer is. I'm still sort of curious to that. But five years seems like it would be on the long side, but con- we'll make year to year adjustments. And to have a point that we put a marker that we put on the ground out there that says, okay, business community, we're gonna come back. And we're going to, you know, sort of re-benchmark ourselves and make sure that we're not, you know, that we're not upside down or there's not something wrong. Would be important.
Cory.
Thank you. And I don't want to get down into the weeds of all of the pieces. I really appreciate you, you know. Reminding us that we want to connect people with staff. We're the ones who are doing that work. Um, one of the things that I just think about is we talk about how much this costs on the on the front end. But not necessarily like what is the money going to? Because if we just immediately start saying, well, let's cut this and let's cut this. I'm not interested in having like this, you know, building subsidized by the general fund or by taxpayers. I'm very much interested in these fees, making sure that people, you know, being reasonable and being affordable and being all of that. And paying for what we need them to pay for so that we can do the work that we need to do. So that's just one of the things that I just was like a a little bit of a like. Red flags. Like, I I don't want to just cut fees and say, how are we gonna pay for the people and the things that we need to do the stuff? Because that's what the fees are there for.
Are you done, Cory? Victoria?
Thank you. And yeah, um. Councilor Rowley and I talked about this in the general fund and I do understand that. I think that fees and permits and that type of thing should be for the costs associated for that work to be done. Um, but we also need to look long term and and larger that. That isn't, we're talking, we we just talked last week about basically subsidizing tax dollars to get. Development in here, but then these people that are wanting to develop their land and put two more houses on their property. Those are two houses that become taxpayers that are now paying their four to six thousand dollars a year in taxes. Um, to that general fund. So I think it kind of balances each other out. Um, the one thing I will mention is when you're talking about the fees and the reduction in fees with the new development code, that's. As far the way I understand it, that that's around the clear and objective. And that isn't necessarily what we use when it comes to partitions and subdivisions and annexations and zone changes, correct? That that's not clear and objective. So I don't know that that being able to reduce costs based on that. I I don't, I mean, I would love it if it was clear and objective. I think everybody would, but I don't know that it's possible with, you know, with code.
Yeah, so we, and if we have a few minutes, I know we're already over, but.
We don't have an item behind this, so it's clear people have got some opinions about this.
I'm happy to chat a little bit about some, just in reaction to some of the questions, I think. So there is another example. So for commercial development as it. Um, is not required by state law to have clear and objective standards. We have a similar, we reduce the process. We have a MDS, Minimum Development Standards Process, which is kind of a mini site plan review. We're using right now with um Bigfoot Beverage is the relocating a portion of their. Operations on the Laura Street. And so instead of what would previously go through a full blown site plan review, and I have the numbers um here, but. Say it would have cost roughly in that thirteen to fourteen thousand dollar range. It's now around thirteen hundred again. So we're doing that also for commercial development. You're right about partitions and subdivisions. That's pretty prescribed in state. So we're doing that also for commercial development. You're right about partitions and subdivisions, that's pretty prescribed in state law. Um, the, the one other thing I want to mention, and I think it's a good conversation piece about annexations. And we've, we've talked to our city attorney's office about this, and it'd be a process to adjust it in our development code. It's, it's one of the sections in the development code that we did not update with the big code update last year. But is looking at for certain types of annexations, we can have uh like a truncated process. They, under state law, certain annexations don't have to have a public hearing in front of the city council like we do for everyone now. So in terms of your comment about lots of the annexation fees are for meetings and notice and all this stuff. For a certain portion of those annexations, we can reduce a lot of that and say, it's just if the property owner wants to annex. And it's not gonna impact other properties, we can streamline it, reduce a lot of those fees, eliminate the public hearing and just get it adopted.
Yeah, well, and I don't want it to sound like I'm thinking that your people, that you and your people need to track every minute of your time. I think that that's, that's inefficient and it's not right. I mean, I, I work in that process, so I do part of the public works. You know, aspect of a, of a partition or what have you, and planning is doing their part, and we just simply have a timeline. You know, it comes to me and I have X amount of time that I have to get a completeness review in, and I'm not sure how you guys do that, but then there's another time. And we don't try to take it to the very end of that time, we try, you know, to get that through, so there is no, like, tracking the time, there's a set fee for that. And so that's what I'm hoping that we get to. I'm not trying to get your people on a time clock or something like that. I mean, I just want to make sure that that's clear, so.
Well, so, for ease of understanding, at least for, for me, is that. I, I get all these different fees and I see a list of twenty, thirty, forty, sixty pages long of different fees and things. Wouldn't it be simpler, at least it'd be simple for me, if you said, okay, this is our average house. This is how much it costs to build before you stick a ground, a shovel in the ground. This is, you know, twenty-six grand. Where does that money go to and then have that broken down and saying, okay, this is, this is what's mandatorily taken based on some ruler law. And then where do those rest of those fees go and then, and then start looking at those individually as opposed to coming at us with. Okay, these are just planning fees. And then six months from now, we'll hear somebody, well, this is just building fees, and then six months later, this is our fire piece, and this, I mean. As, as humans, in order, in order for us to put those together would be miraculous. And so, if, if we're approached, at least for me, being approached, we're seeing a package form, say, this is, this is how much it costs. Billy Bob committed to build a home, and this is how much we're charging total. And where do those, where does those monies go? And I know, obviously, Lamalane's got STCP and Sub's got STP, all of them got their hands in the kitty. But of that twenty-six grand, we know a cost, how much does, how much do we have control over? And then start breaking that down, because if we don't have control of the other ones, it doesn't matter. And so.
But I actually broke it down for you. So, we can look at that, um.
But it seems, seems to me that, but then it's like, okay, so. Of those, it's not part of this conversation.
Um, of that twenty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Part of, the, part of it, that's part of this conversation is two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
See this, see what I mean, it's like, you sitting there means.
It's one percent.
And to me, it's like, that's great, we have someone here, we have asked, asked these questions, and then has everything to do with the big cost, and it's like. You don't, if you're, probably your fingers in that or your, your fingerprint on that is so small. That I'm really interested in who's, who's got their. Blowers on.
So, Mark, what's the twenty-six thousand? What's the thing you're kind of ground us on? And we can move, move back to Joe here.
We're talking about just building a house.
It's building permit fees, basically, so, planning is creating that lot to build the house on. You go through a partition or a subdivision process.
Right.
Um, that creates the pro, the property, then you come in for a building permit to build the house on that piece of property, that's the building permit phase. Um, it, including SDCs, all the fees, somebody comes to pay for a typical three bedroom, two bath, eighteen hundred square foot house, it's twenty-six thousand. Um, eighty-one percent of that is SDCs.
Yeah.
That includes sanitary sewer, stormwater, transportation, lamalane, and a small fire SDCs.
And the lamalane is the largest, isn't it?
It's, um, well, if you, no, it's not, actually, lamalane's fifty-one hundred. There's two sanitary sewers, there's the regional M W M C, and then the local one, those total nine thousand.
Right.
Um, building permit fees out of that total twenty-six thousand is sixteen percent, is four thousand one hundred, is your actual building permit fee.
Right, so that's, aside from, I think. We all want to do good, we want to see development, we want to see developers being able to go in and have staff, which, which. It's been so nice because the tone which I'm getting in the last few years is completely different than it was ten years ago. In regards to staff telling people, this is why you can't do it. Staff now seems, at least my impression is, a feeling is a staffer saying, okay, you got some challenges here, but let's figure out how to get around those. How to, how to do it legally, but let's, let's make it work, and that, that's huge, and developers are saying, and are, and I talked to a bunch of them also. And they are saying that, in that sense, there's a big change. But, but it seems like for us to have an effective conversation of looking at that. We gotta look at the twenty-six thousand dollar bill, not the two hundred and eighty-three dollar, I mean, part of it, but, you know, the DEM meetings make sense, you know, I know about. All those different meetings, all the different steps, and all those add up. So, it seems like there's an approach, maybe an organizational approach, is to look at it holistically. And say, okay, how can, how can the bottom line go from twenty-six to nineteen? Or, you know, whatever, something, you know, how can, where can some significant impact or significant changes be made? In which areas that will drive that total number down? As, as opposed to Springfield continually taking the hit when we only represent a portion of those. So it, it's a partnership thing, and everybody, again, has got their hand in the pot, but, but they're not here at the table. And so how could we impact in a positive way, not getting them in the table, say, let's, let's, let's all, everybody be part of this conversation? Because end result is that we want more moves in the city, that's the problem. And if, if we can't be, we're not the solution, we're, it's, it's, everybody's the solution, and that's what I would love to see.
Yeah, so let's do a couple of things here. One of them is. I hear kind of a longing for, you know, a better fact, set of facts, right? So if maybe you could clean up that example, that single fault, you know, home in a way that would be more digestible for us, right? Because I'm sure it's got a ton of details on there, so we kind of get our heads around, hey, look. You know, if we were stopped in the street and they said, Sean, how much does it cost to develop a home in Springfield? You know, we have some basic level of facts, I think that's probably, that's probably um pretty important. The other piece is, I want to, I want to keep going back and make sure we take a look up at the horizon by that. I mean, but make sure that we're talking about all the, all the jurisdictions, you know, that, that are involved. And it's not that, like, Joe's right, we don't control all of it, but it's gonna be up to us to talk to our colleagues to continue to bring them to the table. And if we put those facts out there, it doesn't change the reality that developers feel, which is they pay all of it. And then I think the third, and I think the third thing that's completely important is when we meet as Team Springfield, and who knows when that's gonna be? If that's midsummer or mid-October, instead of two, like, our topic that we should, that we want to talk about is more broadly fees, right? Because I know the Lamalane's starting to talk about this, I would hope that the utility board's starting to talk about it, but, you know. Exactly, but like, that would be our opportunity where we got all the jurisdictions around the, around the table at the same time. Where we get to set the agenda and we can, and, and, and we can bring that up.
And is that part of the packet?
It's not, I put it together in like a day, as a hurry up.
At some point, I would love to have.
I'm happy to email it out to the entire council.
I would be one of them. I think I would. Wherever I'm at, I would like to.
Yeah, district, please distribute that, and if you've got another, you know, two or three, you know, hey, look, here's what an apartment complex costs. Or, I'm not trying to make work, but if you've got something sitting out the shelf, do that, do me a favor. Scrub the numbers one more time, because we all do this, the minute you hit send on it, we're gonna start repeating it in public. Um.
Yeah, we can't replay that.
Literally just pulled this from one of the recent building permits we issued, so. But I think something like that would help us all a lot.
And Mark, pardon me, go ahead.
Just to be clear, I don't do the billing permit stuff, I mean, Jeff can authorize us to send out billing permit numbers. It's, we have a building official that does the billing permit stuff.
So Jeff's really in charge of everything?
Yeah, but, but Jeff, if you could, if that's possible, um. Uh, the apartment size, um, Victoria alluded to it with her short comments a little bit ago, for example. However many units, and then Lamalane has got a per, per unit fee, this, this, that's.
I think it's fifty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, for twenty-six unit.
To me, I shouldn't say that, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Right, but we don't have to solve what we're not in charge of solving Lamalane's problem.
I'm not, okay, no, I'm not, you're missing the point.
Okay, go ahead then.
What I'm saying is that if someone, we know we need to have buildings constructing the city. And we know that, that your governor wants to, and her, her group want to increase. Want to increase our, our infill and, and, and population, right? And so, we know that, that that doesn't, that's not helping us, but we also know that, that. A person to go to build what we're trying, we gotta build infill, get higher concentration, and yet they're hit with these kind of costs. It's like, hey, you gotta do it, but we know you can't, because you can't, it doesn't hit the performer. So it's, it's, it's information like, okay, what's a ten, ten unit place would cost? And so we know it's twenty-six grand for three bedroom, two bath, for your house. What is a ten unit or ten apartment approximate cost, and we know, we can't, no, I'm not even coming close to trying to nail it down to specifics. But in general, so we have an idea of saying, okay, we understand what you're asking. Developers, but do know that of that, a good, you know, that huge number you're looking at, that Springfield is only this part of it. And, you know, it's, it's a lot of misdirected anger, and I think that if that anger or frustration by these developers. Can be directed to the right sources, then that's the kind of pressure those other sources can start to feel, instead of the city of Springfield being the brunt. That's what's huge.
Okay, this is a lot of good content, Victoria.
Really quick, I think that that explains a lot about why we don't see apartment buildings going up very often in Springfield as well. I mean, when it's fifty-five hundred dollars per unit just for one SDC fee, I would like to see it kind of a, and I honestly, I don't know. Because I don't deal with the building site either, so I don't know a lot about SDCs, but I'd like to see Eugene's Parks SDC compared to Lamalane and all of those different fees. I know that they're a lot, and I know that we.
Text district.
The SDCs?
But Eugene controls those.
I can ask, well, um, Eugene, if they have, like, what their park SDC rate is.
They just increased it last year, I know that, I just didn't know by how much, I'm just curious, kind of what the comparison would be.
Okay, probably. We've shot you guys a ton of questions, and I'm gonna give you some content, like, some discretion to sort of go through and group some of them, right? And sort of, you know, and just answer them in a way that makes some sort of reasonable sense, and go ahead.
So, just want to make sure, we do have a lot, we can start pulling this together, but we need to make sure we answer the questions. That we brought.
Tonight, yes, and then we'll, we'll make sure that we bring back this other information as well.
Just want to make sure we don't leave with.
That's three cities are fine by me.
So I have heard Corvallis, why, and I can get that information from the consultant. And just a quick recap is, our next step, we are planning to come back in June to present a draft of the report from PSU. In the meantime, I can communicate through CMO to the council about what the response is about why not Corvallis? And what is it about Medford that makes more sense than Corvallis?
I've, I've heard that Albany is a good one, because there's a lot of development going on in Albany right now, and I'd like to know why. And, and how we can tap into that, and then I would like to see, um, I, I wouldn't mind, is it, is it because of cost that we're kind of keeping it down to three?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
I, I don't want to put excess cost on you, I just feel like the more variety we have, the better, but that's fine.
Okay, you guys good, or do you want to come back to any particular question? All right.
I'm good, thank you for the input.
Hey, thank you so much for your time to be doing this work, totally appreciate it.
Yes, I'm, we're gonna send Jeff. All right, one other quick thing before I let everybody, let everybody goes retreat.
Did we confirm that they weren't, we are gonna put the. Probably SDC on hold. That's what I.
I sort of don't know, we would, I'll have to sit down with Christina, because it's in the code and the way it's spelled out in the development code. I don't know that we can just blanketly put a fee on pause. And that's why I was recommending July first as part of the master fee schedule, because we can make that change.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can just, like, right at this minute today, just say, let's.
No, that's why I said July one, I agree.
Okay, so, yeah, just figure out, like, okay, we can bring that back as an option, I just wanted to be clear on that.
We can't make a decision like that tonight here.
But, but we can, we have a list of everything that has come up, so we'll put that on paper, make sure we understand, okay, there's several buckets that we need to.
Yeah.
Yes, and it's gonna take all of our partners, and I would just encourage everybody not to, right, like. We need to talk, and you're talking to people like Lamalane and Sub and stuff like that, let their words work through this.
I thought there was another meeting after, I'm just like.
Won't you want to have another meeting afterwards, we can, all right, so council retreat, this is breaking news for you too. We were originally, the, the last dates we had ended up with was May thirty-first and uh June about thirteenth. It's, the consultant's not available. I know, this is comical at this point. Um, so here's what I think we're gonna do, AJ's gonna send out some dates for September. Um, and if you guys can get back to us as soon as possible. And the, the reality is, we're gonna have to, right, September's gonna get so busy, we're gonna have to make it, you know, important and a priority to, to be able to get it done. Otherwise, we're not gonna have the discussion on, around what are our priorities going into the next year. So, what I'm asking for is, look at the dates that AJ sends out, make them a priority, so when we choose it, we're gonna, we're gonna sort of stick, we're gonna sort of stick to it. The other thing that I've asked Nancy to look at is really to just write us a memo in frame of that kind of a theme. The, the couple of things that are gonna take up a little bit more time coming up into the, uh, into the fall. Give us a little bit more context about what's gonna take a majority of our work. Um, and then if people have, can ask questions, they can, they can go to that point. If we don't make the September date work, Joe and I are going, and then we're gonna choose the priorities on our own.
Why don't we choose another consultant?
Uh, not enough time between the dates that will work in the day.
Gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah, so let, let's check the September dates and see if anything pops, if not, we're, you know, then we're gonna just have to make some decisions about. But I, I want to make sure that we're all kind of saying, like, this is important for us to get done, because this is the way we inform the long-term work. All right, we are done, we are adjourned, or run rush out to play.